30-second warning and we'll get started. 30-second warning and we'll get started. Give it five more seconds and we'll get started. If we could get everyone in their seats, please. Thank you, everyone. I'll go ahead and call this Gilbert Town Council meeting to order, January 25, 2022. We have presentation of Student Citizen of the Month award this meeting, and I will ask the Vice Mayor to please handle that.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my distinct honor and pleasure to announce the names of the Gilbert Student Citizens of the Month. The recipients were nominated by their teachers and principals for demonstrating good citizenship and character, and we appreciate the opportunity to not only recognize these hard-working students, but also to thank all the teachers and the schools and administrators in the community. We appreciate all your efforts to educate and influence our young residents, and our schools are some of Gilbert's greatest assets. At this time, we will begin our Student Citizen of the Month presentation. Please enjoy. For those of you who are receiving an award tonight, a certificate and packet will be sent to your school. We will begin with our elementary schools. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, we have Drayden Giannelli. Caroline Manning. Oh, that one was okay. Sorry about this. My first time doing Student of the Month. From Bridges Elementary, Brody Ross. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Alyssa Cook. From Chaparral Elementary, Brooklyn Burrell. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Logan Sharp. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran School, Tenley High. From Edgewood Price School, Rory Leek. And from Islands Elementary, Eliza Siders. Now for Group Two. From Mesquite Elementary, Nash Broder. From Neely Traditional Academy, Radisha Singh. From Oak Tree Elementary, Jessie Garcia. From Patterson Elementary, Alexis Mudgeet. From Pioneer Elementary, Alexander Castro. From Playa del Rey, Haley Long. From Rice Elementary, Avery Brown. From Riggs Elementary, Lauren Ludek. From Santana Elementary, Kira Stires. From Settlers Point Elementary, Landon Foster. From Spectrum Elementary, Kennedy Brodersen. From Town Meadows Elementary, Navy Call. And from Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Chloe Peterson. And then for our middle school and high school recipients, we have from Campo Verde High, Robert Buterla. From Canyon Valley High School, Aramis Chancellor. From Cooley Middle School, Jaden Bayford. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Madison Trimmer. From Gilbert High, Jocelyn Cantu. From Greif Field Junior, Warwick Darling. From Leading Edge Academy, Early College Heather Buckner. From Mesquite High School, shout-out to Mesquite High School recipients, Preston Kirby. From Mesquite Junior High, Cora Dai. From Payne Junior High, Maya Dut. From Perry High School, Ton Huang. And from South Valley Junior High, Asher O'Leary. We'll still be so much better, Mayor, when we can actually do them in person. I apologize if I actually pronounce anybody's name wrong, but congratulations to all the students. We're super proud of you.
Yes, congratulations to everyone. We look forward to the day that we can do this in person again. I miss seeing those students and being able to pass things out to them. Next, we will have our invocation that will be by Heather Watts from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. If you'll come down to the podium, Heather.
Our dear Father in heaven, as we gather together for this council meeting today, we thank thee for all who have come to participate. We give thanks for our elected officials and our appointed city staff in this room for all they have done and continue to do to serve the people in our town. Each day that they serve, Father, we ask that you will give them wisdom and discernment, that they may know right from wrong, as well as the conviction to do thy will, even if it may result in criticism by some. May they show courage to lead the city in bold and righteous ways, and may they never be afraid to speak the truth and always be guided by a spirit of community, service, justice, and love. We pray for our mayor. Bless her for her kindness and her strength and leadership as she navigates us with thy help through these trying times. We pray, Father, for our council members. We pray for their families. Help them to be unified and to listen to opposing points of view with understanding and goodwill. Grant them to govern with welfare and the true needs of our people in mind, so they will be able to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Bless them with personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray, Father, for the agenda that is set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would be pleasing to thee and what would benefit the people who live and work in our beloved city of Gilbert. Father, we thank thee for thy goodness and thy grace. May thy Spirit always be with us so that thy will be known in our communities. Bless this meeting today, all those who are present, as well as the lives of those who we will encounter afterwards. And we say this in the sacred name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much, Heather. Thanks for joining us this evening. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Please, if you all rise and join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, can I please ask the clerk to do the roll call?
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amy Yentes.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Yunka Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. Next, we will move on to presentations and proclamations. We do not have any this evening, so we'll go to communications from citizens and Vice Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you for this part of the agenda. Anybody who wishes to speak on communication from citizens must fill out a request to speak card. If you haven't done so, you can, I think, get them from the town clerk. So before I speak, I think, are we doing three minutes for each speaker? I think we just have one speaker tonight, Mayor Doralese Liddell. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to address the redevelopment study session since members weren't able, the public weren't able to speak. I'd like to address the fact that one of the key issues in a redevelopment is eminent domain, and I heard that Gilbert has never used eminent domain. I ask that you review the council minutes. Many people on this council, or not many, a few people, have intimate knowledge of the history of the redevelopment area. And what I can tell is, yes, the town did use eminent domain. They also used tactics that basically gave the people options, but if they didn't take the options, the only other option was eminent domain. That has happened in the town of Gilbert. So we need to look at our history. In addition to that, as a property owner, 30 years of being under a redevelopment is something that is, you wake up every morning and go, well, did they change the law? Did they come up with some design guidelines that affect your property? Did they have a zoning overlay that affects your property? It isn't something that should be taken lightly. There's a reason why every 10 years you have to look at it and reevaluate it. You cannot continue to have it go on and on and on. I also suggest and highly recommend that the heritage district is not combined with any other redevelopment area. They've been there for 30 years. It's time to move on. That will just put the property owners, in addition to longer periods of time, I ask that, look at the redevelopment commission minutes since the '90s, and you will see how the town acquired the property. A lot of things that happened to the property owners, in my opinion, is government overreach. You develop zoning overlays, design guidelines, become a, basically, you tell the property owners how they are going to build, if they're going to rebuild. So what I ask is to have the partnership, but not through regulation. I think that you can, you know, a private partnership with the developers, whether it's residential or commercial, will go a long way, but we do not need more government overreach. So I ask that your attorney, town attorney, look into that question about whether you ever used eminent domain, because you're telling the public one thing, but really, we need to look at the facts. I thank you for your time.
Are there any items that council members would like to pull off the consent agenda for tonight? I have two. I'd like to pull Item 1 and 3, and if we could just have a moment to discuss them together. I don't know if there's anybody available on the phone or in person. Oh, there we go. Yeah, it's Bob.
Assistant Chief Bob Badgett. That's a long walk, Bob.
Good evening.
I'm sorry to make you run so far, Bob.
I needed it.
Just a couple of questions about these particular backup agreements. Specifically, like on Queen Creek, how many ambulances do they have in circulation? Do they just have one?
Mayor, council, Queen Creek has an ambulance in their possession that they staff as needed. They don't currently run any on a permanent, regular basis. They're still contracted with AMR, GMR, and they handle most of their calls for service in Queen Creek.
Okay, so my question is, how is this a benefit to the town if it's a backup agreement? Because it's mutual, so we back them up, they back us up, but this seems one-sided if they don't have any really in deployment.
Mayor and council, yes, I guess it would appear that way at the moment, but this is more about our CON coverage and allowing us to move into different areas of our CON so that we're staying in compliance. We, in areas, and when there are times of high volume or an emergency-type situation, Queen Creek would put that ambulance into service, and then it would be permitted through this agreement to come in and assist Gilbert on an as-needed basis. Where Queen Creek is going in the future, we're not certain, but we do know that they have a CON, they do have, I believe it's one, they might have two, Mayor and Council, but I'm not certain. And this agreement will allow them to put that in service if there was a major event in Gilbert and help respond out of our CO1 area.
Okay, so, and then I know part of the reason why the council kind of moved to this direction of operating our own ambulances was to kind of have control over our resources and coverage over our community. Does this pull some of those resources into other communities that then we wouldn't have them deployed in Gilbert to respond to incidents?
In a major event, Mayor and council member, sorry, in a major event, that's possible, but it's also very possible that it could be reciprocal. Areas that we share the borders, our baseline corridor with our neighbors to the north mesa and our power corridor, which is kind of half mesa, half Queen Creek, yes, this agreement is really tailored to ensure that a major event, if a major event were to occur in Gilbert, we would be able to rely on our neighbors to come in and help us. It is more of a mutual aid type of approach. It's not an automatic aid approach, similar to our fire trucks. There is a small area where we have met with our neighbors to the northeast and maybe someday to the west, but right now it's a little different over there in that we never want a jurisdictional boundary to prevent us providing immediate assistance to somebody who critically needs our help. Other parts of the country, they joke that there's skid marks at their borders because their fire trucks and their ambulances will not cross. And we will never allow a mesa resident who happens to be on the north corner of baseline having a heart attack to not get help if we have that ambulance on the south side of the street. And that's kind of what this is, is to help protect where we need to in immediate threats to life and health of a citizen. And so I guess ultimately, yes, there is the potential that our unit would be in Mesa, but there's the equal potential that that unit could be in Gilbert. The Queen Creek run is more based on a major event, but we also on tonight's agenda, I think it's four, there's a backup agreement with AMR, who's the provider in Queen Creek, so it's all equal coverage and reciprocal agreements with providers in those areas.
Okay, thank you for that. And then with the backup agreement with Superstition, kind of similar, other than, my main question was just, they're located so far, and we're talking about Bull Canyon, you know, what's kind of the benefit, as well as, you know, again, potential if we're sending resources that far? Does this lead to a situation where we have to contemplate adding more ambulances and purchasing more ambulances in circulation for Gilbert because of that agreement?
Mayor and council, based on the distance, I don't anticipate that happening, I just don't. That would be a pretty long response time if there was no ambulances for regular medical calls between Gilbert and Superstition. That, again, would be a major event. I always, my biggest fear is tour buses going to casinos. If something were to happen with a tour bus in a casino, and they may call us, same thing here, we may call them here if that tour bus happened to be on the 60 closer to us. So it would be reciprocal in nature, but, you know, as we all know, emergencies are unpredictable. So this is just trying to provide a level of coverage to the citizens of Gilbert, and to do so, we offered the same back to our partners and neighboring agencies.
And are there any other kind of stipulations in these agreements that hold us accountable to certain response times?
Absolutely not. In fact, backup agreements are not regulated by DHS, so all of the response times outside of Gilbert are not included in our response criteria that we give to DHS in their ARCR annual report. There was one more part to that I had.
So this is strictly backup and not mutual aid?
There is a small component in this. If it talks about immediate threat to health or life, I believe the terminology is. So again, if there was a heart attack occurring on Baseline Road, we have given Mesa dispatch the authority to say, if Gilbert is the closest unit in that small area, go. We'll worry about if it was on the north side of the baseline or the south side of baseline later. We still bill for that level of service. There's no financial, there's no negative financial impact to the town of Gilbert, but it prevents a debate in those moments where we can make a significant difference in somebody's health or safety. So we're asking that we default to that yes right there for that small number, but it's only a very small number. Drowning, childbirth, heart attack or stroke, I think, are the key ones that we will go and help when we're the closest. Everything else is strictly run through each individual agency's transportation divisions.
And then last question, is there any, I guess, prioritization of who we call first to, for instance, AMR, we would be paying them fees with our other partners. I don't think that's contemplated in here.
Currently, there would be no, we would not pay if an AMR, sorry, Mayor and council, I always forget that part. There is no fee charge to any agency for this. AMR will come to Gilbert and run calls out of the Queen Creek jurisdiction, and they don't charge us. They charge for the transport. If they get on scene and canceled, they'll return to Queen Creek, and there's no financial impact to Gilbert. What we are capable of doing is bill for services provided. If we move into Mesa or AMR, if AMR were to come into Gilbert and transport one of our citizens, they would bill that citizen like we would bill that citizen today. And so the CAD system out of Mesa will dispatch the closest unit that can provide the appropriate level of care in the fastest amount of time.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any other questions?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Chief Badgett, so thank you for clarifying that the level of service is actually billed to the person being served, so that's how that works. Gilbert would not be out any additional funds. And then my other question is, is this the first time that we've had these IGAs with these jurisdictions?
Mayor and council, we've had IGAs with Mesa and Queen Creek on many other options. We used to provide a lot of the maintenance and fire trucks for Queen Creek, so we had an IGA based on that. This is the first IGA we've had with other jurisdictions to support each other's CONs.
And why is that? Why now are we finally getting around to having IGAs for that?
Mayor and council, one of the biggest reasons is CON boundaries. We need to report on our CON boundaries annually to the state based on response times, financials and the other. Moving into other jurisdictional boundaries has presented quandaries for DHS in the past. You can do it if you have a backup agreement, but they don't monitor backup agreements. So what we did is we created backup agreements to ensure that we stay in compliance with our CON, that our surrounding jurisdictions stay in compliance with their CON. The biggest difference today is where the private providers have much larger CONs that cover many jurisdictions. We have a CON that only covers Gilbert. AMR can run in almost any city in Maricopa County because they have so many overlapping CON, so it's never an issue for them. So it was never an issue up until July of this year that we had to even address. So now that there are these judicial boundaries, we needed these backup agreements to be in compliance.
Thank you, Chief.
Vice Mayor, yes, sorry. Thank you. I'd like to just remind the council also that when we supported going into the ambulance service, one of the stipulations was that they would be bringing back these backup agreements, so that was the direction that they were given from council.
Are there any other questions? Entertained a motion on Item 1? We can do them together. We can do them together. We'll do a mass motion. A motion to approve all the consent agenda items 1 through 16.
So moved. Second? Oh, I don't think.
Please vote.
I'm gonna need IT support. Mine isn't working either.
Mine's not working either.
Motion passes 6-0. We'll now move on to our public hearing items for this evening. I will have to turn my page back. Go ahead and open the public hearing for Items 17 and 18. I think we want to discuss 19 separately unless someone wants to discuss 17 or 18. Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve 17 and 18, or a motion for 17 and 18.
Mayor, 18 was withdrawn.
Oh, and I don't need to do anything with that one, sorry.
Correct.
I was looking at that, too. So just Item 17 then, please.
Move approval.
Second, I have a motion from Councilmember Anderson, second from Councilmember Tilke. Please vote. And 18 was withdrawn. And moving on to 19, did we want a presentation on that, or did, Councilmember Kaprowski, did you have some comments?
Yes, I have comments on Number 19 for the Code of Gilbert. Upon reviewing it, I would like to ask for a continuation. I have a few questions for staff to follow up on that they'll need some time regarding a few items, particularly regarding some of the access management language changes.
Would you like to, I'll open the public hearing on that. Would you like to make an emotion to that effect, Councilmember?
I'd like to motion to.
Excuse me, Councilmember, could we close the public hearing?
Oh, close the public hearing, sorry.
Thank you.
I remembered to open it, forgot to close it again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to motion to. I'd like to motion to continue Item 19 to the next council meeting.
That'd be enough time for staff?
I believe so.
Okay. Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember September. Please vote. Motion passes six-zero. That's the end of our public hearing agenda. We'll move on to administrative items. Does anyone have any reports from boards, commissions, and committees? Oh, Councilmember Tilke?
I just wanted to remind everybody that if you're going to get a brick for the Gilbert Sister City Garden, that we're coming up on the deadline of February 1st, and so if you want to put one there, we'd be happy to have you. Thanks.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move to communications. Report from the town manager on current events.
Mayor and councilmembers, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Any reports from councilmembers on current events? Okay, I really don't have anything to report either, that we will be having a food drive, a community-wide food drive at the end of February, I mentioned in our last meeting, so please keep an eye out for that. I will mention there is coffee with a cop tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. at Higher Ground Roast Street, so come out and spend some time with our Gilbert police officers. And that's all I have, so meeting adjourned.